Please rise for the singing of our national anthem. All right, I have additional to the agenda. Any additions? Say, uh, take a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Wheeler, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. So, to the July 2015 Register of Council Rights. Any corrections or amendments there? Counselor Wheeler?
Um, yes, under eleven, it just has me reporting that Nicole is away. Things, that's all.
Very good. Counselor Frick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ten point three, it mentions that there was a partnership between ASF and Drayton Valley Community Foundation who are hosting that workshop.
All right. Thank you. Anthony Frayer, I present the July 2015 Public Hearing for about twenty-fourteen twenty-two D. Any corrections there? Twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, twenty two D. Any corrections there? All right. I would take a motion for the adoption of the July 2015 Register of Council Rights as amended. It's really qualifications, but amended. The July 2015 Public Hearing is for about twenty-fourteen twenty D. The July 2014 twenty-two D. Can I get a motion to adopt those items as amended? Counselor Wheeler, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. And at this time, and I'll mention, I'll be in a little bit this morning on the agenda, such as item five point zero, five point two, in which I have a pecuniary interest in, so I must excuse myself under the requirements of this full government. All the other items later on the agenda for the same reason, I must excuse myself. Before ten, I will be leaving to speak on affordable housing initiatives. So, I will return post haste, and at that time, I will turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Loeb.
All right, can I, uh, this is our public hearing for about twenty-fourteen twenty-two D. I was public hearing after about twenty-fourteen zero-two D to allow the state's area to strike. Is he correct? Excuse me. Excuse me. So, this is my, uh, second amendment, second amendment, second amendment, correct, I A S P. July 2015, which made the public hearing record received this public hearing. Now, if it, uh, was valid, the public hearing, uh, in the newspaper, uh, present, the public hearing, uh, received, will be presented as a part at the time of the public hearing. So, this public hearing, comments, uh, this may, uh, July, uh, comments, uh, wishes to speak, this is your. Can I, uh, this is, uh, my name's, hi.
To, uh, to the building that they're going to be constructing, so I just wanted to just verify and see exactly what, what was gonna be transpiring, and I think we've all pretty much succumbed to the fact that they will be indeed building behind us, so I just kinda wanna see what, um, what the proposals are, and see exactly what's gonna be transpiring behind there.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. You have some.
Yeah, Mr. Deputy Mayor, most of my presentation addresses the rezoning, but it's kinda interrelated with the A S P amendment, so is it okay if I just, uh, on that basis?
It seems acceptable just to do, yeah.
So, this slide shows our Mar-a-Loa State Stage Four development, and I draw your attention to the note at the bottom. The lots are serviced and registered. Intent will be to go ahead with duplexes along the north side of the cul-de-sac and single detached homes along the south side. Single detached homes or detached garages that will be accessed off the lane. Terms of zoning considerations are basically why we're asking for these amendments. I draw your attention to the, uh, the italics. The current R four zoning, while it does allow for duplexes and single detached houses, the setback of six and a half meters from the lane is required for detached garages, and that poses some challenges. By comparison, the R one N district does allow garages to be set back between one and three meters. So, just, uh, this is an illustrative plan, and basically showing that with the six and a half meter setback applied, the garage is more or less end up in the middle of what should be backyard space. And in particular, the first lot, a garage simply cannot fit with a seven point three meter depth. If you apply the six and a half meter setback, it leaves a space of only five meters. So, in theory, you could fit a very small garage, but it'd be tucked upright against the house. Similarly, with the second lot in, not as drastic, but again, it places the garage basically in the middle of what should be amenity space for the owner of the home. So, in summary, as an option, we could have sought variances for probably the first five or six lots along that south side. The remaining six, six lots probably have enough, enough depth to accommodate a six and a half meter setback. But we thought, and again, in consultation with your staff, that rezoning would probably represent a better option for the long term. If we're going with duplexes and single detached, we might as well have zoning that is a better fit for that form of housing. The A S P amendment, um, the current designation is for mid-density housing, and it identifies apartments and townhouses, but, uh, marketing efforts for those forms of housing are not successful, so we decided to go with the lower density. The A S P amendment would identify this as low-density housing, and therefore, the proposed zoning would be consistent with the A S P as amended. So, I thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you. Other comments, questions from the floor? Counsel, do we have any questions for, uh, Counsel Boss?
Morning, Jim, thanks for coming in. You mentioned that there had marketing efforts for high-density on that north side there for apartments, and I'm wondering what kind of efforts those were, and how determined that duplexes would be the way to go as opposed to perhaps rental apartments?
Sure. The, um, the site itself, we have to look at the entire parcel before subdivision, and that's what was contemplated for apartment housing. Personally, I'm not aware of, you know, the extent of the marketing efforts, but I think, there was a lack of interest for an apartment on the site, and at the same time, I think we saw some success in our Stage One with the lower-density forms of housing, so we decided to continue with that on this cul-de-sac, going with singles and the duplexes.
The duplexes have attached garages in the front? They have off-street parking?
That's correct. The, um, the north side of the block, and again, this is just an illustrative marketing plan, but it shows the pocket sizes and the duplexes along the north side. They will have front attached garages with no access to Forty-third Avenue, whereas on the south side of the street, that'll be the form of housing with the, the front porch or veranda, and then, like I said, the rear detached garage is accessed off the lane.
Okay, um, any other questions, Counsel? No other comments from the floor? Chandra?
I have a question, please.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah, good point, yeah, we'll address that when we get to that. All right, okay, any written submissions here? Okay, then I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you. And we have, uh, this public hearing open, this is for about two thousand and fifteen zero-one D to allow the rezoning of the lines legally described as lots one to twenty-two, Block Eight, Plan One, Four, Two, Four, Eight, Seven. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments, concerns, and questions from our public, and our land use, for portion of the, uh, waste of the, uh, the past will have the creation of ten, uh, portion of the subdivision to be developed into duplexes in accordance with the old land use zone, and specification of that land use, uh, along the, uh, of the subdivision to be developed into single family dwellers in accordance with old land use zone, and the specification of the, uh, is required within that land use. The, uh, has received first reading at the July twenty-six, uh, two thousand and fifteen special, uh, council, uh, which may be followed by second and third reading today depending on the, uh, comments received at this public hearing. A notification of the, uh, request and comments from the public and advising of the public hearing has been done through, uh, newspaper advertising to facilitate the public hearing process, and the comments, uh, we be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. So, at this stage, again, I will ask for comments from the floor. No comments from the floor, all written submissions? In this case, I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you. And I will go for the mayor. All right, I think we're on to item six points early, proclamation for Rowery Week. It is February twenty-seventh, is celebrating Rowery Week. What, uh, Rowery is a entrepreneurial organization of one point two million owners in more than thirty-four thousand clubs in two hundred countries. And what is a organization of business and professional leaders, you know, of work, uh, humanitarian service, encourage standards, and help build goodwill and peace in the world. The Valley is in the work of volunteer leaders who dedicate talent to improving the quality of life, of residence in Drayton Valley, Brazo County, and the world. Funds raised by the Rowery Club of Drayton Valley are largely dedicated to community support programs in all of Columbia. Therefore, I am glad to claim that Drayton Valley do hereby proclaim February third through twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, to celebrate Rowery Week in the town of Drayton Valley. That is done. We'll move on to item seven point zero, which is the public time section of our agenda, where we invite members of the public to come and state their concerns. Are there concerns that any member of the gathering would like to share with us? Nope? All right. Decision on this, uh, one, Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. In two thousand and ninety, Sustainability Plan was adopted by the council for the success and completion of many of the goals, administration with the input from organizations, made the necessary revisions and changes to the plan. The public experience is growing with a number of future generations. In January, the recording was sent out to the consultant, took him to the two thousand and ninety, Sustainable Plan. The Center for Sustainability was there, was a successful candidate. On the fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the consultant, the workshop administration and department services, and adjustments and changes, the committee was, uh, sixteen, and public input was gathered to improve the plan. A second workshop on December second was the consultants, administration, and department to review the input that was collected on the fifteenth and sixteenth weeks. The two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, Sustainable Plan for, uh, is being presented to the council for adoption. No comments from the general board were received when given the opportunity to review the final draft. The council adopted the fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, Sustainable Plan for adoption.
We have the motion before us. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Nato?
Uh, I just wanna say, working with the consultants was a pleasure. I, I had the opportunity of doing a workshop with them at FCM last year, Sustainability, and I really, I thought she was excellent, and I appreciate all the public input. I know there was a pub, a lot of public input of a lot of workshops going on at that same time, so, um, I, I appreciate the people that did come out, because there, there was a big ask of us with the social development plan as well going on at the same time, but I thought it was an excellent consultant, and I really enjoyed the process, and it was nice to be part of it again. So, and I'm looking forward to rolling it out and having it updated, and there were some, some gaps, I felt, so I'm, I'm really glad to see them addressed, and it was a good, it was a good process.
I'd echo those comments, and, and, uh, thank you to administration for, uh, shepherding this review of the plan. Anything further? No, very well, we have a motion, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item two, Counselor Bartlett, committee appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the conclusion of the by-election, the distributed list of standing committees of council is presented for review and appointment of council representatives and alternates to all committees, as some adjustments have been made to fill vacancies and redistribute the representation. It should be noted that a resolution was passed at the May seventeen, two thousand, regular meeting of councils stating that the mayor may designate any member of council to attend any committee, any committee meeting, and vote on behalf of the town. This resolution was passed to ensure that all committee meetings have a, a member of the town council, uh, present, and capable of voting on behalf of the town, where instances do arise where both the appointed representative and the alternate are not available to attend the meeting. Once approved, the list of the committee appointments will be forwarded to the applicable organizations and groups, as well as advertised in the local newspaper. Therefore, I move that council approves the appointment of the attached list of council members and alternates to the standing committees of the Town of Drayton Valley Council as presented, taking into consideration that the mayor can designate any member of council to attend any committee meeting and vote on behalf of the town.
Thank you very much, Counselor Boss. Any discussion on this motion? And I'll probably touch on this once or twice more in the meeting today, but it's great to be up to full strength again, so, again, welcome to Counselor Fredrickson. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Eight point three, Counsel, on the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen Social Development Plan.
The Town of Drayton Valley, which, uh, in two thousand and six, for, uh, facilitation of, uh, new, and, uh, the town, uh, was certain to work, uh, and resources for agencies to develop within the plan. The, uh, has been, uh, between the town, uh, and the community's coalition. In July, uh, thirteen, a request, uh, for, uh, to conduct, uh, the two thousand and sixteen Social Development Plan. Our, uh, facilitation services, Inc., was, uh, needed. The, uh, new, for, uh, the resiliency, uh, action for the goal, uh, so, uh, coordinate with community state, uh, with the credit to ensure the resiliency of the major, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, in two thousand and nineteen, Social Development Plan. Is being presented to council. My comments, uh, secured when given, when given, uh, review, uh, the, uh, the, uh, to, uh, fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, Social Development Plan, for draft.
Thank you very much, Counselor Fredrickson, and, uh, compliments to administration and to the healthy communities coalition for their, uh, uh, time and effort in, in providing feedback, um, on the, uh, the update of the Social Development Plan. Particularly pleased that the Brazo County has, uh, identified it as a priority to, uh, participate, uh, in this review and redraft of the plan, and to move some, some, some of these social, uh, milestones and benchmarks, uh, ahead. So, with that, any discussion on the motion? Counselor Fredrickson?
Um, I was just wondering if administration would be able to share, um, maybe a couple of the success of the last plan? I just see that we have a number of outcomes, and I just wanted to see what kind of outcomes we've had in the past.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly with respect to the last, uh, Social Development Plan, some of the major issues and, and items that we had to deal with concerned childcare, concerned housing, concerned, uh, some of the, uh, aspects with respect to poverty, and a few just, I mean, some great, great strides in, in achieving some of the, uh, the big milestones on those items, certainly with the Early Childhood Development Center and our Day Home Agency, the Affordable Housing Program, again, with support through the provincial government, but our Affordable Housing Program with respect to having twenty-six units available for individuals, working individuals within our community, and the more recent, uh, poverty, homelessness and poverty reduction strategy that is being implemented. So, those are three of the major ones. Certainly, if I take a look at some of the other things, youth engagement within our community has been huge. One of the other key, uh, items within the previous Social Development Plan, partnerships. I mean, that's stressed pretty, pretty dramatically in our department in terms of making sure we have partnerships, so I could keep going.
Well, those are, uh, those are good highlights of the, uh, of the earlier plan, and, and of course, we're, uh, those, we'll just keep building, and, uh, and, uh, in addition to, uh, to those many things, uh, the new plan, I think we should identify that it, uh, adopts a resiliency building model, or, um, um, to, um, to work within, with, uh, individuals and agencies in the community, so, um, very pleased about that as well. Anything further? No, we have a motion, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. For Counselor Nato, appointment of Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The position of deputy mayor for the Town of Drayton Valley is done on a rotating basis on the term of eight months, with the upcoming term running from March first, two thousand and fifteen, to October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. In the past, order of rotation was based on the number of votes each counselor received in the election in descending order as follows. Counselor Nicole Nato, November first, two thousand and thirteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Counselor Graham Long, July first, two, two thousand and fifteen, or fourteen, sorry, to February twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Counselor Dean Shuler, March first, two thousand and fifteen, to October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Counselor Farrell Wheeler, November first, two thousand and fifteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Counselor Deborah Bossert, July first, two thousand and sixteen, to February twenty, two thousand and seventeen. And Counselor Brandy Frederickson, March first, two thousand and seventeen, to October thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Council is being asked to appoint Counselor Dean Shuler as the next deputy mayor. I move that council approve the appointment of Counselor Dean Shuler as deputy mayor for the Town of Drayton Valley for the period of March first, two thousand and fifteen, through to October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Counselor Nato, and as a former deputy mayor, uh, I want to ask you whether you endorse that, uh, while you're leaving. So, welcome. Motion, you want to discuss, uh, discussion, Counselor?
Would like to thank your worship for the opportunity to do this, uh, for eight months. It's a lot of work, but a great, loving opportunity for us, anyone who's interested in, in local government as I am. I'd like to think that there was a time or two when I didn't entirely know what I was doing, and Counselor Shuler and Counselor Nato, uh, experience was in for people at that stage, so appreciate both of you guys, and good luck, Counselor Shuler.
Yes, sir. As I do, and Counselor Nato completed her term as deputy mayor, uh, thank you very much for your, uh, your participation, um, as well as your regular council duties. To the role of deputy mayor, um, has been, um, one that's, uh, a lot more intense than it, uh, has been in, in years past, um, and, uh, part of the idea there is to build our organization, and that starts with our council, so, um, so, I'm sure we'll be fine. Motion for us? Counselor Shuler's hand is up. That's carried, thank you. Item eight point five, Counselor Long.
Okay. Of the two thousand and fifteen, uh, for the municipal corporation of the Town of Drayton Valley, uh, so, uh, so, uh, be as follows, I misread that, uh, for the Town of Drayton Valley, be as, uh, the, 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 uh, Counselor Nicole, uh, Counselor Graham Long, Counselor Dean Shuler, Counselor Farrelly, Counselor, uh, Counselor, uh, uh, with any one of the following from administration, that's many, the all-town manager, this, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 services, or Tom Thompson, Director of Services, or, uh, 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 by the town manager in writing, or here, uh, for, uh, 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 to drive, uh, uh, accept, sign, and make all or any bills of exchange, checks, proports, uh, or, uh, for the payment of money, and, uh, instruments where negotiable, uh, or collection for the credit of the corporation only with papers of the corporation, and that the town manager or any person designated by the town manager, uh, may arrange settling, uh, accounts between corporation, uh, and, uh, and send receipts for vouchers, uh, with regard to administration, the town manager is definitely be authorized in writing to sign such instruments.
Thank you. Pretty sure, I think, uh, there was a lot of working hard on that for several hours. Yeah, thanks very much. We have a motion before us. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? All in favor? That is carried. Items 8.6 through 8.9, as I alluded to earlier, I must excuse myself as a result of a pecuniary interest. Coincidentally, it also happens to be close to that time where I must be off to a speaking engagement in any event. And so, I will once again turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Long.
Yeah, one more time. Okay, item 8.6 is scheduled to be on camera discussion with counsel forbearance. I'm going to shuffle the scale a little bit here and move that further down because we do have, although it looks like we have a resident that's left us already, but we do have people who are relating to the, to item 8.7 and 8.8. So, let me move down to, with your forbearance, to item 8.7, Councillor Wheeler.
Thank you. Administration has received an amendment of the area structure plan for southeast 94975. This area structure plan adopted in June 2006 and was amended in June 2012. Application for the law is that the orders of the law is requested that the amendment reflect the proposed plans to develop low-density residential component within the five undeveloped areas shown on the map. The amendment has proposed that the existing R4 density, which was shown in the area structure plan as mid-density, be used in the general residential district and R4 low-density narrow lots. Some are allowed to be in the north portion of the subdivision to be developed into duplexes, and will allow the south portion of the division to be developed into flats. A public hearing has held earlier, so, regarding the proposed area structure plan, notice of public hearing was approved by the local newspaper pursuant to the MGA requirement was provided via law adjacent lands. Any evidence received were provided to council during the public hearing this morning. The area structure plan amending BALA 2015-02D is hereby given to council for second and third reading. The council gives second and third reading to BALA 2015-02D for amendment of the area or Marilla Estates area structure plan.
Thank you. So, we have a motion there, any discussion? Counselor Shuler?
Those motions would have to be separate.
Okay. Okay, so this is a motion for second reading. Thank you. Discussion, Counselor Fredrickson?
You're going to have to excuse my ignorance if I'm asking a question on the wrong one here. So, is that I know initially when this was discussed, I mentioned about apartments and townhouses, and what the differences of housing units would be or dwelling units, moving to more low, into low-density plan.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, sure to answer the councillor. With the total of 22 units being proposed now between the duplexes and the single detached, we didn't, we didn't get to a point of designing an actual apartment, but it's probably safe to assume it would have been in the range of, say, 48 to 60 units on that site, and having to accommodate setbacks and space for parking and that kind of thing. So, roughly between 48 and 60 units by comparison.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Fredrickson again?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. What is doing down in the, in and around the division? Are you, in what is going to be an alleyway or there's, there's, do you have any issues for, with, you know, what those duplexes use as regulations or anything like that?
In theory, there shouldn't be an issue on this particular cul-de-sac. The duplexes will have a front-attached double garage, so that allows for two parking spaces within the garage, provided it's not filled with storage. There'd also be two spaces on the pad, on the actual driveway pad, and then some on-street parking in between the actual driveways. On the south side of the block, though, with it being all rear-detached and no front driveways, there's all on-street parking available in addition to the detached garages in behind. And as I was saying earlier, with some of the lots that have a significant depth, the west end of the cul-de-sac, some of those future owners may choose to set the garage back so that they can have a garage pad back there because they'll have enough space. It's those first five or six lots that were the challenge in achieving that setback. But in terms of the parking in other locations, I'm not sure the specific issues around the parking in the other part of Marilla Estates, but I know where we've, we've transitioned from the front-attached duplexes to the single-attached with rear-detached garages, it's worked quite well, and the parking problems have been avoided.
Okay, any further questions? We have a motion on the floor, this is for second reading. Call a question, all those in favor? And that's carried. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council give final reading to BALA 2015-02D.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, then I'll call a question. This is for third reading, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Next up, then, we're going to go to item 8.8, Councillor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy. Administration has received an application to rezone a portion of lands, excuse me, a portion of lands located on southeast 9497, west of the 5th, which is Marilla Estates, from the existing R4 high-density residential district to R2 general residential district and R1N low-density narrow lot residential district. Such rezoning would allow 10 lots along the northern portion of the subdivision to be divided into duplexes, and would allow 12 lots along the southern portion of the subdivision to be, to be developed into single-family dwellings as shown on the attached map. The current Marilla Estates area structure plan indicates that these lands are designed for high-density residential development. However, the landowner has made application to amend the area structure plan and to allow these lands to be rezoned for low-density residential development. The amendment of the area structure plan will be taking place simultaneously with the rezoning application, as we've just heard. When the lands are subdivided, were subdivided in 2014, the landowner kept the rezoning of R4 with the intention of developing singly, single-family units. However, the developer has begun to sell the lots, and it was noted that the proposed developments were not able to be suited, situated on the property as anticipated, and the setbacks for the R4 district prevented certain structures from being located in close proximity to the property lines. In discussions with the developers, administration has suggested that these lands be rezoned in order to accommodate the setback concerns. This will allow the developers to build what it was intended, as well as adhering to the setback requirements set out by the zoning districts in the land used by law. This will also give future homeowners the ability to build structures within their property without the constraints of the R4 district. A public hearing was held earlier this morning to allow the residents to provide their comments regarding the proposed rezoning. Notice of the public hearing was advertised in the local newspaper pursuant to the Municipal Government Act requirements, and was provided via mail-outs to adjacent landowners. Any and all comments received were provided to council during the public hearing this morning. Rezoning by law 2015-01D is hereby presented to council for second and third reading. I have a number of options to choose from. I choose option A, which is I hereby move that council, or sorry, I request that council give second and third reading to BALA 2015-01D for amendment of the land use bylaw for rezoning.
Thank you.
So, so, so I move to let council give first reading to BALA 2015-01D as requested for the development.
Okay, second reading.
Second reading, sorry.
It's a complicated business. Okay, so, motion for second reading. Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on that motion? Then I will call a question, all those in favor? And that's carried. Counselor Bossert?
I move that council give third and final reading to BALA 2015-01D for the amendment of the land use bylaw for rezoning.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Okay, let's, at this point, where are we? Page 8.9. Let's jump to 8.9 and then go back to 8.6 with your forbearance, and then take a break pending the return of his worship. So, item 8.9, Counselor Fredrickson?
Administration has received the report of West Central County Agency, which is a 2015, 2015 district. What agency, which is, to the 14, to the 2015, the 2015, 2015, the 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 2015, the
Yeah, I can definitely mention that to West Central.
Councilor Schuler.
Thank you. On the front of. We're talking about subdividing.
That's to the end of the property that they own. So the proposed lot thirteen will be in that far east side there.
Yeah. Comments from?
None.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, any other questions? We don't have an issue then, Councilor Schuler's suggestion that we need to answer the reserves question before proceeding. Is that your own thought?
Yeah, I would actually like to make a table on the motion on that until we can have this cleared up. And if we can't determine that there's any reserves that have been paid, that then the landowners notify that there will be reserves owing. So if I can table this until the future.
We have a table motion and no discussion unfortunately on a table on motion. I'm sorry. Because, so, table motion, from your information, Council Fredrickson, this just puts it on hold until the next council meeting, essentially. So all those in favor? And that's carried. So that's tabled until next time. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn my clocks and go way back to item eight point five, eight point six, sorry, which is an in-camera discussion. So look for a motion to go in camera from Councilor Schuler.
Thank you, Your Worship. Move to in-camera at ten fifty-three.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Okay, we're going to. Nine fifty-three, yes, good catch. Yes. Okay, so I'm looking at Councilor Schuler again for a motion to come out of, well, make a motion. Two motions, if you like. Manny? Councilor Schuler?
This time I can say ten, fifteen AM.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, we're in camera. Councilor Schuler, anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I'd like to make a mention that Manny Dill, Tom Allen, and Counselor Graham Law negotiate and finalize an agreement with the penalties associated with sixty-three oh-two twenty-eight. This is law twenty-nine, block one, plan one-one-two, three oh-six-one. Sorry, three oh, yeah, three oh-six-one.
Thank you. We'll have a discussion on that motion. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, folks. I'm sorry for sending everybody out and bringing everybody back, but I'm not going to call a break. No, I think I'm right in saying that's the last thing that Glenn's out of, so we'll wait until he's back and.
So he's back for eight point, there wasn't there one decision item?
Eight point ten he's back for, right? That's for our subdivision.
Why does he give me a talk?
He's talking to some church folks about.
Thank you. Administration has received the. Central Planning Agency. From. It's holding. Within the. Seven west of the. On the eighteenth, West Central Planning Agency received. Utility. Within the. Uh. Two. This. Is for the town of the station. Um. The Planning Agency can. Propose. Included. With the. Um. And. Within this. Received, does it comply with the town's full development plan? With this. A result. As it is. Point eight head files. Another call for consent have been received for agencies utility. Adjacent. The Central Planning Agency. Town approved the subdivision subject to the list of conditions as stated. Pro subdivision. Deviate. Subject to the conditions as noted.
Thank you, Counselor.
A question for Jen. Hi, Jen. With regard to the legal description that was read in, I think. Yeah, okay, that was it. Okay. Any discussion on this matter?
Counselor Fredrickson.
Um. Let's just ask somebody else about this. Could you just give me just a couple pieces of information about what a lift station is and what it's used for in the community?
Mr. Deel.
Lift station is basically when you can't get the sewer by gravity, so you've got to put a pump to lift it up. This is probably the first one in our town.
Mr. Deel enjoys questions of an engineering nature. Any discussion? All right, we have a motion before us. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Drayton Valley County for. Those report. Nineteen fifteen. One point two. Respond. Sixty-seven. Working through. Technology Center. Law. One point four. Stateholder's. Uh, twenty, sorry, December twenty-fourth, January eighth, two thousand and fifteen. The Board of Vitals Network Counsel report for the Counselor Law. Can I get a motion to accept those items as information? Counselor Schuler? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Jen.
I don't really have a whole lot to report at this moment. It's starting to pick up a little bit now, but it usually happens come February, it starts to increase a little bit. So hopefully we'll see a little bit of action this year with the recession. I'm hoping that doesn't slow things down, so things are coming forward.
I think they're. Drive on that, I think. Do we have anybody? Okay. Sustainable. And Mr. Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things to report on. Last week, I was in attendance at the FCM Sustainability, Sustainable Communities Conference in London, Ontario. And I would have to say there's quite a bit of great information with respect to, to me, the takeaway was learnings from some of the technology and some of the things that are currently happening out there. Everything with respect to district energy, to some of the things around waste to energy initiatives, green design, and of course, having some history with that across our country. It's nice to hear some of the results and some of the takeaways with respect to what's working, what's not working, and some of the best practices out there now. So I think as we, as a nation, as we continue to go through that, I think we'll have more learnings to come back and be able to have a better assessment as to what is working, what is not working, and what are the best applications for our municipality, in particular small municipalities. It was also nice to recognize the award winners for the FCM Sustainability Awards. Of course, our municipality haven't been a recipient in the past. Was also asked to participate in an evaluation of the award program while I was at the conference, so participated in that. But it's also, again, like I said, it's nice to hear about some of the other award winners and really get some insight into how they went through a community development process to achieve their project, because in the end, their projects are award winners because they were successful. So again, best way to go after what's working, what's not working. Other than that, the district energy technology, which was one of the tours that we went on, very interesting, very fascinating, and some great, I think, applicability for our region. So I think if we take a look at that as we venture into some of our other, you know, public facilities or likewise, I think there's some strong potential there. Other than that, just came back and then on Monday participated with council flipping burgers and hot dogs at the family day. Well, my coworker in the hot dog station, she was busy there too, so. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people attended. I think council was kept quite busy at the, at the food station. That seemed to be the longest line anywhere, but anytime that I went to another location within the Aspen landfill site, it was quite a few people there. A number of people at the Omoplex, at the public skating, both rinks were well-used by the public, so it was nice to see everybody out there enjoying family day. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Protective sources, Jeff Thornton.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here to present the. So if you would like to refer page one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine in your package, I will go through them for you. The. Respond. Three. Two. Trailer fires. A logging truck that was, that was on fire. Vehicle collisions. Involved two vehicles or. Or single vehicle collisions. There were no serious injuries in any of them, so that was. Uh. Cause. National cause. Two. Have a way. To get them sent to. Community. To determine. Where's. Unfortunately. Is still. Struck. Somewhat in that area, so we're going to continue the campaign to educate and hope we can bring that number down. Two. Three. Assist calls with. Two. Calls. A gank. And. A smart plant in which an individual. Will cooking and burn something on the stove, so created a bunch of smoke, which was there for that nothing more serious happened. So. Calls for the month of January, so pretty much one, one a day, so. Time. Interviews. Mr. Poo. Who. Administration has. For the position. To get. And he's just finishing the grand emergency management. And. Counselor. Is the individual that wrote. New emergency response plan. So we're very. And. I'm sure he's, he's. But once he gets his feet. He'll be, he'll be. To the town. So.
Yes. Did you? Like? Much? You don't need to feel compelled.
Keep it short. I just wanted to say good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and it's an honor to be here and be selected to be your new safety and emergency management individual. Looking forward to the challenges and to serving both the town and our community.
Thank you very much. And the person who does your job is, is appreciated when we don't see you.
I'll do my best.
Thanks very much. All right. Sorry, Counselor Meyer.
Is it a quick question? And with the. Pointing him as the dam now, or does that change or no?
Um. Emergency manager. Positions will change. See. Retire. The. Of. Can't to. That. Position. Be the. That position. Go straight in detail for council.
Thank you. Anything further? In that regard, no. Thanks for much. All right. I love the way it's broken out here. Some of the. Menaces. Here. Sharon.
I just wanted to say publicly, thank all of the people that came out to work the election, the by-election. We had a really good turnout of people and lots of interested, enthusiastic people working for us to make sure that it went off very well, and I think it did, so I just wanted to thank them and congratulate Counselor Fredrickson. And now we'll be back to work as usual.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Those comments. Staff volunteers who worked on the action. And I'll talk. All right. Sharon is not here.
Your Worship, she's back now and she's in operation. We'll have the first meeting. We'll set the date today with the committee and we'll go from there.
Okay, very good.
They're working on an application today. We've got a deadline tomorrow. And so.
So we'll have her present at the next council meeting. Great, thank you. Communications. John Adler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Not a lot to report, or to Jen Martin. For our app, we're sitting at about five hundred and twenty-five downloads, so we had a nice little spike over the long weekend, which was good. We had an update on our app, so a lot of the people who have the app have gotten the update. Just some content and bug fixes there, nothing major, but just a small update. We also have a page for our app on our website that links directly to downloading it both on the Google Play Store and on the App Store through iTunes. So that's draytonvalley.ca/mobileapp, which is really great, and it's, we've seen a few downloads since that page posted up as well. And right now, one of the things that we're working on as a major project is our annual report, so you'll be seeing drafts of that soon, but stay tuned, because it's going to be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Information sources, Mr. Adam.
I have a few things to report. Attended the Brazo Emergency Management Agency meeting. This is a meeting that's a prelude to a tabletop exercise that Brazo will be doing in March. I think twenty-six is the date that's been set. Subsequent to that, I attended two meetings of TELUS. One is the machine-to-machine and the education. That is the TELUS initiative that's being driven for the smart city. Then there was, I attended a workshop on behalf of Mr. Deel, the Regional Emergency Management Workshop, which dealt extensively with the efforts by the provincial government in the area of emergency management and the online services that are being provided to assist communities in preparation for any emergency. So there are several online programs and also some changes to the emergency management process, which I'm sure both Dennis and Tom would make reference to, is the Incident Command System, which is being implemented throughout the province. And subsequent to that, Jen and I had a meeting with Big West Country Radio and to see how we can use them to promote our app and various other promotions that we will be doing through the app and through our website. That's my.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Deel. See your report?
Your Worship. We had, last week was kind of consumed by the animal control issue, by all of us, I think, but we'll have a conclusion to that. I had a nice phone call from our MP. It was very interesting to say, what projects do we have from this area for this Canada Fund? So.
For building Canada Fund?
For building Canada Fund. And I was very impressed and so we did talk about it, so I mentioned about the sewer trunk line we are applying between the county and the town. So that was very good. And we're making an application for the flood medication for the sewer lagoon. It's going to be under March. I'll have to make sure that it hits the next council meeting for your approval. And we had a few land negotiations going on in two, three different areas of the town. And by the way, there's, we ordered a new sweeper, so when it comes, I think we're going to have on a public somehow some nice day when it happens, so the council has to go and maybe cut the ribbon on that or.
Take it for a.
Drive it and so at least you spend money on equipment, you should be able to see what you're getting for your money.
This was a previous budgetary expense.
Yes, this was. And we had excellent meeting at Devon last week. I went with the deputy mayor and I think there was about eight people in their group. There was nurses and doctors and the MLA who was chairing the meeting, and I think they received our, our input very nicely. Actually, they were happy about it and maybe then we have a chance this Saturday again to meet with the Minister of Health. And I think if we could become a model city, try some of the, some of the areas of telehealth, then our concerns about, some of the concerns with people mentioned in the health area will be, will be addressed. So I guess TELUS will be joining us to meet with the minister to see what we can offer. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
And the last item is particularly poignant these days. Anything that can be done to enhance patient care through the use of technology be in order for our government to look at. So thank you for that. And. Point. Counselor.
Thank you. First. I was asked to attend and join the four H speech contest for, I think it was the Long Bay Beef Club. Okay, those guys. Put a lot of effort into it, then. Certainly the top presenters were very, very good indeed. It's a very impressive standard they have. I recommend if ever get a chance to go, do that. So I'll go to the committee meeting. Counselor Law attended the North Saskatchewan Water should audience headwaters forum here at the Mackenzie Conference Center. Very interesting day. I expected it to be. I expected it to be, uh, there was much more to drink and juice. Um, the whole community's looking a lot of really interaction together and relying on each other, so there was a lot, uh, I look forward to seeing, uh, some more things. Nice to see a large facility full of people from that town, uh, coming in and, uh, and seeing what Drayton Valley can do as far as, you know, hosting an event like that, so very proud of it. On the twelfth, I attended the chamber, uh, speaking on behalf of Councilor Naro, who was off doing something fun. Uh, because it was, uh, the, uh, service, which, uh, for those of you who are not familiar with lie rewards, is kinda the important thing. It's the strategic plan, if you like, for the thing. So we had somebody from the, I forget his name, but from the provincial, uh, government to, to talk us through that process, which will be something, uh, we do in moving forward over the next few months. And we'll probably be looking for some council involvement, um, uh, in that as we go, but you'll, you'll hear about it as we get closer. Uh, things, uh, yesterday, uh, indicated, I attended the rural healthcare meeting in Devon, and I agree completely with what he had to say. Uh, as far as consent, we suspect that they'd heard them all before from every other rural community, which is waiting times, uh, it's shortage of doctors. But what I think they did for useful and was nice, we will do was that we were able to offer at least a third of a couple of solutions, specifically telehealth, um, and a couple of other things that, uh, that Manny had too. So, uh, you don't know what comes out of these things ever until we see, but, uh, I thought they, uh, they were probably fairly, um, well, uh, sure. Uh, they've been becoming inefficiently slow. And I will leave it there. The brothers and hot dogs were, were highly sought after for an extended period of time. And, and that's the win.
Okay, sure. Thank you, worship. My report's gonna be very short, committee meeting, uh, brand new seniors on February fourth. Uh, things are, are moving along very well there. The renovation to, uh, the rooms on the south end of the facility are, uh, are actually moving very, very well. The contractor won't, uh, won't say, but it's suspected that they're actually ahead of schedule. So, uh, that's, uh, that's kinda nice. You don't usually get to hear that. And, uh, haven't had a chance to, uh, to see them yet from the report that, uh, we've been given. It's, uh, they're very nice indeed, very, uh, very large, since they ripped out right down to the foundation and, and increased the size of, uh, the footprint, so. As well as redoing the roof over the central part, which was, uh, something that we knew was gonna have to be done at some point. And it was nice that the province was able to get it in under this renovation and save us, uh, trying to find dollars where, uh, when things are getting very difficult to find dollars. So we've been very fortunate. Uh, I also attended the family day and, uh, was, uh, it was a lot of fun. Um, I think we had quite a little assembly line going there that helped us speed things up. In fact, uh, uh, they couldn't cook them as fast as we could hand them out, so.
So you were handing out uncooked, uh.
The ones here and there, that's all.
Fully cooked is cold.
It's, uh, sought after.
Yes, even though it was sought after. Uh, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, thank Council Wheeler.
Thank you. For many of this last three weeks has been super full of conferences and Winter Cities Conference, which was inspiring people learning what they can do and be on a, and, uh, which like Grant said, was all about communities and sharing how we all live wherever, right? And is it what you think you do or not? And then, yeah, as I said, the sustainability and my engagement, how we engage the public and the people, Roger just did a whole pack of, like, stuff of how to engage the public on consultation issues, anything else. So it's all in my books, which are submitted. I'm sure they'll be in the next council, but, uh, it, Family Day was fun, so it's, it's been a wonderful month.
It's nice to see somebody, uh, drawing, uh, attending conference, fatigued, uh, the downstrokes, right? Well, I'm looking for Councilor Besser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think any of us can be any more energetic about our position as Council Wheeler. A little energy, buddy. Uh, February second, I attended, um, the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Strategy Team. We continue to work on policies to roll out, or roll out our MAP program. Uh, we're still looking for volunteers, anybody that's willing to take a, a role in volunteering as a overnight worker or, uh, administrative support or, uh, even in event planning. We are looking for a number of different volunteer positions for the, uh, MAP program, so our homelessness coordinator, Emily, is more than happy to hear from you on that one. Uh, February third, as Councilor Long mentioned, we had Waste Management Meeting. February ninth, we welcomed Counselor Fredrickson to our team. Welcome, Brandy, to, uh, the table here today and you'll, I, I know that you'll bring great things to our council and, and it's good to have you here. Uh, February tenth, I attended, uh, Joint Housing Meeting with, uh, Brazzo County and, uh, the community of Burton. We are continuing to work on our housing authority, uh, model, which was presented in draft form, uh, at this meeting for the first time. It will now go back to our prospective, respective administrations for, uh, final, uh, going over, and then it will come back to our committee to, um, hopefully be somewhat approved and then brought to councils for their final, final stamp of approval. So it's moving forward, um, and I look forward to the final draft coming out fairly shortly. February eleventh, we had GNP. And, uh, February sixteenth, Monday, as, um, all councils mentioned, we had Family Day. I was grateful that it was Family Day in Alberta and not Halifax, where they have now had some four or five feet of snow. And, and it was a brisk day for us, but at least it wasn't snowing like it was in, what, Eastern Canada. So, uh, thanks to all of our administration, to all the staff that came out and organized our Family Day event. As always, it goes off very well, well-attended, and burgers and hot dogs were, again, a great hit. It's always fun to be on a day like that. Yesterday, uh, not as a counselor, but I did wanna mention, an event in our community was the formal wear affair put on by Aim For Success in conjunction with Rotary. Uh, it's an event where young people can come and acquire formal wear for their grade nine or grade twelve graduations at a very, uh, reduced cost. And I was there lending hand as, uh, a seamstress, which is part of my former life, but it was, what I wanted to mention is that it really builds capacity in our community, where we've got two different groups coming together to offer this service to young people in our community, and it was well-accessed last night. So kudos to Aim For Success for arranging that for the young people in our community. And I also got to show off Rotary House to my daughter, who really didn't know what that facility was for or what it looked like, and she was incredibly impressed. And again, it being Rotary Week, hats off to Rotary for that wonderful facility that they have provided in our community. And, uh, other than looking forward to a legal seminar this weekend with the mayor and meeting with our Minister of Health on Saturday, uh, those are things that I have coming up and, um, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bossert. Do you have a, uh, for, uh, Council?
Yes, um, so, uh, February ninth was an epoch. That was the day of this morning, so I wanted to say, uh, thank you to Shannon, as well as all the volunteers who did work the, I heard it was, uh, it was a very well-attended and successful event. I also heard that there was a lot of first-hand voters, so we had the, uh, new voters getting out and getting involved in municipal politics. Uh, the sixth, uh, Police Management, um, Location there. And, uh, yeah, it was, uh, as well as working with, uh, the match from Big West, so it was a great time, it was a great day. And I just wanted to mention, um, and I'm not sure if it's worth here, I'd say, as well, but February twenty-eighth is the Drayton Valley Figure Skating Club, skating club. The figure skating club is writing sixty years in our city. It's as old as the town itself. Uh, so this is a part of this skating club in our community as well. And so they're, they're doing their best, uh, and their, their operation is February twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Naro.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on January twenty-second, I attended, um, the Eleanor Pickup Art Center. And this weekend, um, Will, Will Street, um, attend, and they always do every year something at the theater. So everything, there's so much going on that we do within the facilities that we have, but it's nice to see other user groups, um, also do family-friendly events as well. So, uh, I wasn't in attendance, my kids are kinda over the age group now. So we've evolved into new members, going into their, so, uh, the community probably is, um, and do, doing their bit for a community in terms of that. Um, on January twenty-second, I attended the Winter Cities Conference with Counselor Wheeler. Um, that was probably one of the conferences I've ever attended. It's always nice when they talk like. Working somewhere that, you know, in between, um, some, they have an area that looks like an outdoor park, and people were, uh, about other communities and stuff, and it was just a kind of way to have really neat conversation. And, uh, interwove, uh, culture within the conferences, where they had local, uh, with winter scenes, local photographers, uh, competition through the university, and we, um, did our, our bids for those. Um, they had a little, uh, within, um, the radius of the show conference center, had all the presenters as well. So it was really interesting how it just, it was full package. Um, but the council report, my council report, isn't included in this one. I'm not sure whether, uh, it'll, I assume next council meeting. But I would, um, in my council report, there are several links to, um, presentations. There's a lot of coverage, it was the first of its kind, um, and people were there from Ireland, Denmark, everywhere, from all over the world, or Americans, Canadians. Um, it was really amazing to see just really little, uh, that we have, and we should embrace that in creating, I know, it was interesting. You liked it. But, uh, also meaning to, um, just share a link of, uh, winter, um, that was shown at our conference, and I think it would really, you'd, you'll see it, I'm sure you guys will actually embrace it and think, oh, this is a moment for us and things that we could do about engaging our community throughout, um, all of this. And, um, in the winter, especially, uh, we're very insular and we, we're, we're a safer community when we're all in about and, um, we're all talking to our neighbors and knowing what's going on, and we're certainly more active and healthy. It was really, um, creating space for, for reasons. They had, um, ice ribbons that you could use during the wintertime, which Counselor Wheeler had first mentioned to me, and I didn't know what the heck she was talking about. And then it ended up being one of our presentations. So it was really interesting, just on how to use your public spaces all year round and not just because of winter, we kinda forget about, we, we push it aside for summer to come back much sooner, but it was, um, probably, like I said, one of my favorite conferences I've, I've attended. I really enjoyed it and I really came back inspired and went outside the next day even though it was cold. So we're thinking how we view winter within our, our communities. So it was, um, and if you can do that for anyone who hates it, there was, uh, a swell of possibilities when I came back, how about that? So I'll, I'll share that video the next time. Uh, I just want to welcome Counselor Fredrickson. I'm so happy that you put your name in the hat and, you know, supported you and, um, I think, um, I think you're gonna be a tremendous asset and I think you're tenacious and passionate and I think, um, those are things I really wanna see around the table, so welcome aboard. And, uh, on January tenth, I was able through Communities in Bloom, be kind of a check day, which is always great. People love to check with their organizations, so I was able to drive a check and be helping the Bloom for an elementary school in the commission of their, um, their trails through EPBR last year, and we, um, gave them a donation to more eco projects within their elementary school, so that was great. And I was able to do a check presentation at the region in terms of their mural restoration program ongoing, so, um, that was always, that's a fun day, when you get to talk about local groups and, and their projects and how we can help them. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. That's, um, that's fabulous. And, uh, I'll just mention this for, um, Rita and Sarah, for the meeting, we'll need to work something in there so that Counselor Naro can share the wondersplendor of, uh, winter in, um, Central Alberta. Yeah, it's gonna be tough, but, um, I'm sure she's. Uh, Shannon, did you have something to add to?
I apologize for not covering it when it was up for the last time.
That's fine.
Uh, just wanting to introduce Sarah Henderson, anyone who's not aware. Uh, she's been brought on board as the administrative assistant, uh, to work with Rita and assist with management and council.
Right. Background, I can chat on a thing on this now, uh, when I get to my report. Uh, it's good to have you with us. Uh, January eighth, I was, uh, able to attend the, uh, the Communities in Bloom check, because Counselor Naro was away, uh, for, uh, Aurora Schools Eco-Gaming Project. Uh, February third was, uh, a big day and I'm glad to congratulate, um, Counselor Fredrickson, uh, on her, uh, on her win, uh, on her dates, on her, uh, very strong campaigns. And it's, uh, everything, I imagine, getting people to come and vote on a cold winter's day in February. Um, but you both, uh, do that and do it well. And, uh, again, congratulations to you, uh, for the win and, uh, and my compliments to, uh, volunteers and administration for, for, uh, carrying through with the, uh, uh, by-election process. And now to track those compliments that I just issued, uh, by the way, Counselor, I think, um, uh, I'll just pass it on to administration that we should turn the lines to, um, what I'm, uh, to, uh, the general election. Uh, we're down low. Uh, so, uh, having any more, uh, at the next general election, uh, we want to, uh, we need to turn the lines more to how to facilitate the process or, uh, how to make it easier for those in the nearly annexed areas, uh, to, uh, to produce, uh, information they need to produce in order to be allowed to vote. Uh, I did have, uh, some concerns expressed to me in that regard and, and I've undertaken on behalf of the town that we will attempt to do better. Um, but also a very efficient and effective day. Uh, February, uh, I was pleased to, uh, speak, uh, at the North Saskatchewan Watershed Association Headwaters Group, and I was impressed with the, uh, the, uh, large number of individuals from, uh, from the Nether regions of the North Saskatchewan River Basin, um, to come out and, uh, exchange ideas and, and discuss issues. Um, February eleventh, uh, of course, we had the swing in for Counselor Fredrickson. And, uh, from the ninth to the twelfth, uh, with Counselor Wheeler, uh, was recent, I attended the FCL Standbodies Conference in, uh, Ontario, uh, city, um, winter there. Uh, it was cold and, and, uh, you don't go for that, um, and I wasn't disappointed. It was great. Uh, I had, um, a lot of my time spent on the engagement sessions. And, you know, it was particularly interesting to, um, as I. And what was particularly interesting, as I attend conferences here and there, the people who attend these conferences at the municipal level is extraordinary. And what that demonstrates to me is the commitment that Alberta and Albertans have to learning and to learning best, bringing up new ideas for their communities. The other thing that struck me was, I think, such as associated with engagement, it is a sustainable conference, and sustainability, of course, means many things, but in various conversations around the tables, turning to financial sustainability for municipalities. Municipalities, large and small, and so it is an issue that we all face and continue to strike, or municipalities in particular. And it's, it is that some sort of work needs to be in place, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. A very big conference nonetheless. On February 12th, I returned on Thursday evening on February 10th. I was pleased to attend the Alberta Whalers and Reeves Caucus, at which Mr. Municipal Affairs spoke and received ideas on how the municipalities see the province addressing some provincial budgetary issues. But there was a deal of discussion around the tables, again, surrounding municipal financial sustainability and just intra-municipal relations between urban and rural. So it was a very good day. And of course, on the 16th, I want to issue my thanks to the staff who organized the day. My thanks to Big West Country for organizing the council to work the burgers and flip burgers. And doing a phenomenal job at feeding the huddled masses. You did great. I'm always the beneficiary of some of that, some of that cooking skill, so I appreciate it. Just a bit of public information, today, you'll recall that I proclaim a rank, a rank, a rank. May 12th, there'll be a rank raising here at the town office. And so I invite you all to attend if you wish. Thank you very much. That is my report, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councillor Bossard, all in favor? That's carried, that's it. Thank you.